All right, so we have two sets of minutes to approve.
We approve the minutes of the January 21st meeting and I showed the uh, meeting, uh, special meeting on February 1st that was the tour of the building.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the January 21st uh, minutes in that we spent a lot of time with our public comments and all five school committee members and our principal responded affirming the value of our teachers and I wish that we could have that reflected in our public record.
Is, I don't know what the, what the, uh, practice is.
So, we've got a motion without a second. Oh. No, sorry. It's not a judicial number.
Hey, how you doing Elliot? You guys know Elliot Pro, he's the head of the finance committee.
Good to see you.
Have you been know Shelley, the business committee?
Hi, Shelley Frida.
Well, I second it just for discussion. So that we, you know, just to find out if that's the way with the committee then I can go back and certainly, uh, put something about that in.
You made the original motion.
I made the motion to
To approve the minutes.
And to amend that, right? Or you?
I'm proposing an amendment.
Let's make the amendment specific.
So, I propose the amendment.
You propose, propose to amend the minutes by adding the statements?
Okay, I propose to amend the minutes by, uh, to reflect that all five school committee members and the principal responded to public comment affirming the value of our teachers.
Second?
Um.
I'm okay with second.
I'm open to wording.
Just tell me that once again, just so to, uh...
All five school committee members and the principal. Made statements in response to public comments. Affirming the value of our teachers.
Now. Is someone set, because I have a question about it, but first this should be accepted?
I'll give a second.
Okay, so hang on, this is Are you wanting just that statement and minutes or you wanting a state, a sort of summary of each member's comments?
No, just that statement.
I think something really similar to what we missed to the public comment. Just kind of reflects.
Okay, so made statements in, uh, response to public comment. What did Jessica, what was, how did you have yours worded Jessica?
I said that all school committee members and the principal, um, individually responded affirming the value of the teachers. That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted that reflected in our official record. Because I don't feel that the issue has been fully put together.
Okay, so let me read this again. Uh, "All five school committee members and the principal made statements in response to the public comments affirming the value of the teachers."
Did they personally affirming? I don't know.
Individually affirming?
Yeah.
You said that one time. I don't know, you just have to make, I just want to make sure that I get this the way you want it. Is that okay?
That, that's fine, yeah. I'm open to other suggestions.
I'm, I'm good with that as it is.
Yeah, I love that. I think, well, I think it fits.
Okay.
So, uh, we have a motion with a second. Do we have any other discussion? Vote, all in favor?
So that's four, four oh to amend the 21, 21st minutes. Should we have a vote on the minutes for the February 1st?
Absolutely.
So we're not the same. Okay, so who was the, the original motion for the 21st?
You cobbled together too, so.
So we're just gonna do that one?
Separate, separate motion for the first.
Okay, so we're just dividing them so that we take care of the first one and the second one will keep the same or it's already been moved and seconded. Um, and okay, I got that.
All in favor? Aye.
On the upstanding.
You're absolutely right there. Elliot. Okay. Financial statements, family warrants.
There are seven warrants presented for signature, total of $68,855.27. Happy to take questions if you have them. Uh, the school choice and general fund expenditure reports were sent electronically. Um, again, happy to take questions. There's nothing major to report since our last meeting. We just met a few weeks back, so there's not a lot of change, but I did want you to know that as we're going through the shared central office expenditures, I'm just paying close attention at all of the elementary schools to make sure that the line items that are in Frontier do exist at the elementary level for '20 and for '21. Um, there are some instances where one school has this and then the next school doesn't, and so I'm just paying close attention to that. I don't think it's a financial issue in any way. Um, I just need to potentially move some funds around, so I just wanted to know that's on the radar. Um, and I think that there is a larger boiler update, but what I know of it, uh, is that we're gonna move forward as discussed with the school choice funds and then the building use rental funds that we have available and once we get through the bid process, it does look like we're gonna have to put it out for bid. And then the freezer condenser replacement, I understand that that's already in process. Have they been here yet this week?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and the estimated cost on that was just under $10,000 and that will be paid from the school bunch account as we discussed. And then we'll have budget conversation in greater detail, but on the timeline right now.
So the condenser is gonna be done within a matter of
It should be done this week, I think.
Days?
It's not done already.
And the boiler is
So within the next week.
The boiler is subject to how fast we can get through the bid process and have a satisfactory outcome there. And then once that's done, it's just a matter of days.
It may not be till mid-March.
Say again?
May not be till mid-March. According to the timeline, we have to use for a cog for that process. I was talking with, emailing with the annuals today regarding, they got a pretty full plate right now and so we might be able to, they may be able to send us our template because it may be pretty straightforward for us to do. So we're working on that right now.
Great.
All right. Do we have any public comments? All right. So yes, onto unfinished business. Update on the capital request, the boiler, we already we don't want to regret there. And then on to the budget.
Um, capital request. Before we skip over that. Obviously, we had the tour on Saturday, which was great. And I guess I just wanted to check as far as the process going forward to make sure that, um, we have to, I mean, I've seen other departments in town have already submitted, the town has a form for each item. Okay, and, uh, you know, to which is supposed to be attached some sort of way of coming up with a cost, whatever you've got for a cost estimate and so on. I'm sure you're familiar with those, but those actually need, you know, we have, I guess, decision here as to what we're doing or we already sort of decided and where is Bill as far as getting that paperwork submitted?
So, um, I have the paperwork. I have it filled out up and, I wanna get the pricing for the carpet in this room instead of doing the classrooms, doing the office carpet and this carpet and hopefully it falls, still falls in that same range. The, uh, other requests would just be updated in numbers. We talked about the rim band, we put that in last year. The oil, um, the oil, uh, spill, a rim containment system there, um, we put in last year. The concern now is that those numbers are getting older and so we're gonna have to try to get, reaffirm those numbers. Bill put a call into, um, Scott today just to hear what he had for thoughts on prioritizing. Kind of deferred it back to the school. They saw everything and they understand where these are at, so. I think the rim band project's gonna probably be one to be funded over multiple years. And so, kind of lining up the indoor carpet and rim banding is kind of our A-list and then the B-list be the, um, the oil, the oil field, uh, plan, oil field, the oil containment system. And then C would be the windows, because windows are gonna probably be a multi-year project too, and so I think it's probably something to push a little harder next year for getting, not just the price of the windows, but the, what the full installation is and then maybe we build a plan that says we wanna do so many classrooms a year for three or four years and then before we get that number on, maybe 20,000 a year to do that project. So that's my thoughts on those.
Can I ask you to list those in order of priority once more, please?
Sure. Number one being, um, to start the rim band, um, project, which would be over multiple years. The second one would be carpeting. Um, upgrades the office carpet. Ben, jump in if I misspeak because this is, you know, and this room that we're in.
And, and the guidance area, which is a smaller space.
Yeah, that needs to be, since I'm guessing that that number might not exceed 10,000, um, that needs to be presented as a multi-year plan to address all the flooring in the building and therefore to make sure it follows the rules for capital project.
So that will be over, the, the carpet together right now is what, was 13 or 18?
Oh, is that much?
Yeah. Just the square footage and such, so.
Then, then that's not a finisher.
Right, right, and so, um, but the problem is we need to get a new number for this one. He's hoping to get them in here this week.
I just, you know, there's still time, but time, you know, all of a sudden there's not. And so we just need
I hope to have it, I hope to have it submitted by the end of the week.
Okay.
And then, so that would be the A-list, hoping to get that funded this year, and the B-list would be the oil, emergency oil, um, I don't know what they call it, it's a, fixing how the oil is being stored and, um, spill prevention, prevention and the manhole covers, kind of this whole system together. And then the last one is the windows on the north side are, um...
South side.
South side.
Yep.
Right, those are the ones we're doing.
And can I make a, I apologize, I know we're using wrong, but, um, what is the rim band system? Just a quick.
Sure, so, uh, yeah, around the perimeter of the entire building, um, it's the, the rim band, the, the, the material that's closest to the ground beneath that is the woods rotting out, so there's no, um, structural issues. But it's, uh, it's pretty significant, um, as you start to pull away that actual.
So it's, it's, the siding is mostly yellow and then as you get down, there's a green aluminum sort of, uh, thin sheet metal and behind that is wood that's rotting.
Yeah, sort of foundational kind of material.
Yep, and, uh, the rim band is frequently, um, being damaged by the wind and winter weather. Yeah. And the, um, the scope of that project has increased initially. We thought it was much less.
So this band goes all the way around and lures out behind it and cause rot?
Yep.
We started that project last year and, but it's a much larger, was around like, uh,
Anything else on, on capital?
So I'll, I'll submit those and I'll CCO the committee, so you guys can submit.
Outstanding. All right, I guess it's on to the, uh, the budget.
Okay, so everybody should have a packet in front of them.
Elliot, did you get something? You can have mine right here.
It's not here, so you can take it.
I've got, uh, already.
So I emailed all of these out electronically ahead of time. I know it's a lot to digest, um, but hopefully that helps you.
Do you want one to look at?
Hopefully it helped, um, shed some light on what's taken place over the last few weeks with budget changes. So we originally came in first meeting with a percentage increase of 8.32%. Uh, we're currently at 4.59, which is down 3.73 or 110,000 from the last meeting, so. Ben, other department heads, Darius and I have worked together to bring that number down to a more digestible number. Obviously, still up for discussion on how far we need to bring that down, if at all. I also know that there's some changes to other funds that we probably wanna talk about here, but I'll start with, um, going over the narrative summary in the written page. Um, first I wanna explain a couple of things because it's hard to look at this document, which is the line-by-line summary compared to the narrative. This document looks exactly at last year's approved budget compared to what we're proposing. This gives you more detailed information. For example, it tells you the entire salary increase that we're anticipating versus this sheet just shows you the difference. And that's not all reflected here necessarily because this is just pertaining to the general fund. Whereas the things that I'm referencing here might, they might have other funding sources, especially related to salaries, but I wanted you to see the whole numbers when we talk about those. So a few of the changes, uh, that were made here are listed at the bottom to encompass that reduction. So I'm jumping down about three quarters of the page where we talk about what we cut off of the general fund for the second draft. So teacher mentor stipends, we had added into the budget for this, um, next fiscal year. We had pulled them off of a grant. However, after many conversations just to try to keep trimming that number down, we decided to continue to fund those through the grant and we did find out that we are getting that grant funding again next year. We just found out yesterday, so that's a plus for us. We had put in a request for two brand-new IA positions. We had pulled those off. That was one of the first things to get trimmed back. That was over $80,000. I'm, I'm sorry, over, um, $40,000 that we were able to cut back there. And then, uh, we have a reduction to longevity payouts that our teachers are eligible for next year. And then I changed the funding source for two of our IAs, so that helped bring us down to the current 4.59%. Most of the other things up top, um, that we talked about last time still exist. We have a small increase of $500 to nature's classroom. We added 1,500 for security for any unexpected maintenance with that new door system. We increased custodial wages by $3,000 to allow for additional summer support. Building general repairs increased by just under $3,000. We've been talking capital a lot. We know that we need that money. 3,000 is not enough, but it's helpful. Teacher salaries, again, as I explained, this is an overall increase. It doesn't hit the general fund in, in the same exact way as it's laid out here. Teachers are paid for multiple funding sources, but we are anticipating based on a potential contract settlement scenario that we have built in just shy of $80,000 in wage increases. IA wages, again, same scenario, not all hits the general fund because they are funded in other places. You'll actually see that the IA wages are decreased if you look at this line-by-line summary because we did move two of them onto school choice. Uh, but the IAs collectively will see an increase of $21,000 based on their contract that was settled last year. We talked last time about the, uh, Special Education Revolving Fund. The revenue has changed over the last few years. We're unable to continue to fund that line at such a high level, so we've had to move two part-time staff back onto the local budget, so that was an increase of 45,000. That was directly to the general fund. And then there is a wage increase of just under $8,000 for any other personnel, central office staff, administration, principal, custodians. We have left in at this time that team leader position, which would be hired under the teacher contract. We're hoping that we can leave that and move forward with this position in the budget based on the needs of the building. And that is an increase directly to general fund of $55,000. So you have the percentages there at the bottom, just to give you a general idea of what we're talking about for numbers, percentage increase from one to four. And then I gave you some school choice info, although there is a more detailed sheet here, but I just wanted you to have that little snapshot of what we're looking at. I'm happy to take general fund questions before we start talking about school choice, if I can clarify anything or if there's something specific that you wanna talk about.
I was wondering, that's probably a question for Ben. How many IAs are there in the building?
Currently?
Mm-hmm.
24.
And how many of them are one-on-one?
Give me a minute.
So there's 24 currently, but we do have a place holder in for a potential part-time, um, that would be funded this year through special education. But next year would need to get funded in a different spot, so. We've, I've looked at last year to the current, uh, last year's budget to the current actuals to what we're projecting for next year. And we're fluctuating between 24 from what was budgeted last year to 25 going into next year. We're currently at, if we do hire this other position, 24.5 for our actuals for this year.
There's seven currently.
These materials are really helpful. Thank you, Sean.
Yes, I mean, as we look at these numbers and sort of pare it out, the heavy hitters have some of the least movable.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot left to trim back. We're kind of at a point of saying, an IA position would really be the likely reduction to make a significant difference or elimination of that new position that we're lobbying for.
Let's talk about that a little bit. So, we know that normally steady state without a no-bride, you're looking at two and a half percent max growth revenue from the town. And we're still lower than four and a half. Let's just talk about why that's a smart financial decision to bring in the, uh, the team leader.
Sure. I think, um, just with the, the needs that we have across all grade levels, um, our special education department, who consist of, uh, an amazing group of educators are stretched very, very thin. Um, we've seen an increase in needs across all the grade levels, specifically, um, in early childhood where, um, we have quite a few reach referrals coming in, um, each, each year, um, so that add to the special education numbers. The team leader would act as a go-between in central office and the special education department. They would help with educational evaluations, um, help lead classes, um, help provide, um, small group instruction at time as well and, um, uh, when, when some students are really struggling, having, uh, big feelings, if, if you will, um, to help out in times of crisis also.
I mean, I think right now the model, the amount of special needs and the complexity of those cases, I think that the position in the long run could possibly be safe one, because we can start looking about how we're using personnel. Right now, um, if you spend a day with Ben, he can't have a full meeting with you because he is that, um, big feeling guy. Uh, no, the crisis. He's, he's the, the guy who's called in a crisis. He's, you know, to manage, um, you know, the whole school and this growing population, it requires a lot of meetings, a lot of family outreach, um, you know, and connection with families in those meetings. That's kind of my hope is to, with this position, um, be able to look at how to deliver to special education as well and actually give him some breathing room to actually be doing some, instead of putting out fires, you know, to do some planning and that kind of thing, so.
And, yeah, and the other piece of it is the, uh, even though it may seem like the easy button to make the number go down, uh, there's risks with out-of-district placement and legal, uh, I mean, there's just a lot of potential downside to not having this position filled.
Yeah, and I would, I mean, just echo what you said there. So the amount of, um, high needs that are coming in that could have, not necessarily be put outplaced, but if things aren't running well, that then becomes questions from families that is this the right placement and that kind of thing, and so being able to be, um, increase that level of communication so that doesn't become, unless it's necessary obviously, but, um, sometimes we end up having those conversations when we feel like we can do it and the family's not sure and a lot of that has to do with that back and forth in communication. Looking at these numbers, you know, um, man, we're looking at the, the biggest expenditure is the position. You know, we, you know, and I remember looking at this last year, the two and a half percent number, and this is where I'd love to get some, um, guidance from, greater clarity from the finance committee, because we haven't made the two and a half number in the last five years.
Yeah.
You know, so our budget actually, our salary increase is, is over two and a half percent.
Yes.
So it's, we can't, I don't know, and it was the problem, and I even brought it up with the legislature people that, um, who visited Sunderland a few weeks ago. How do you build a budget when your salaries are larger than the town can wants or wants you to expand, you know, that kind of thing? Because it is all salaries. You know? So. And I know finance committee can't just give us a number, you know, because they're gonna look at all the different moving parts.
Are there, um, is there a similar position to this in the three other schools?
In all three other schools? No. There's a similar position to this in Deerfield and there's a similar position to this in Frontier.
At Deerfield, there are additional positions that don't exist here as well, such as school adjustment counselors, um, full-time special education secretary, um, multiple, uh, guidance counselors, school psychologists, kind of a dual role. Because I'm just thinking that there should be some sort of, and, keep in mind that all schools have different needs. You would think that it would be somewhat, not necessarily streamlined, but there would be some similarities between the positions at the four schools in this regard.
I would say yes, however, the smaller schools have lower incidence, right? And so the principal can take up more of those incidents, um, you know, and their other role. Each building's kind of done differently depending on their staffing, you know, if you look at, you know, Conway, which you had 135 students total. Um, here you get twice that, um, you know, just under twice that here. You know, you're, you know, you're talking about their school psychologist can act as a leader or, you know, the principal can act more as a leader. You're talking about the number of cases, you know, that's, and we're, as you just explained, Deerfield, which is more similar. I mean, Deerfield's numbers, I just happen to have the sheet in front of me, and their population's, um, is just around 386, so, um, you know, it's 450 more. But they have multiple positions there, so.
Yeah, it's, and then so so with the, and Conway being significantly smaller, is the level of need here, even though we're smaller than Deerfield, greater? They have a larger staff to deal with that, but do we have a, a greater need and is there any other way that, um, we can look at shared resources in any way? And because right now I can't defend that because I can't explain what the other schools do.
Right, right.
And I, I can't speak to, um, the exact level of need that's at Deerfield. I just know it's, what's here.
Right.
And what we need, yeah.
The shared resources part also gets tricky. Uh, we are trying to do some shared resources of, um, sharing of ACBA's, um, across, we do share resources of, um, PT and OT, you know, those kind of positions, um, across. Um, the problem with the case manager is basically this person would be doing a lot of case management work. You start sharing them across, you know, I imagine the smaller schools could share, but what percentage are they here and if they're not here during, you know, days of crisis, you know, you're, you know, it's a tough, it's a tougher model to
Right.
to swing.
Because I do hear that the needs here are unique, but I don't know how they compare to especially Deerfield. And I always look.
Deerfield also has a rise, also has a rise in special ed, significant special ed. And I've kind of said this, like, we're doing a better job of identifying and, you know, getting programming that's in place, and I think there's also a better education even once the parents coming in about the availability and what can happen. You know, also level of accountability is higher for teachers, for those, for those students. So, so I think that it's a little bit of both. There certainly is an increase of special education in our district right now. They're saying they're seeing it probably across the state in the younger years, and they're trying to determine whether or not, you know, you see the different kinds from screen time to, you know, parenting styles to, you know, whatever, whatever group wants to point the finger, what's causing it. But I also, would also say that we're identifying earlier, and we're putting programs in place earlier that save us money down the road, and also besides to save us money, gives students, you know, to make, to make progress faster.
But to your earlier point, Deerfield does have a position similar to this.
Yes, and they also have, they have.
As well as.
Yes, as well as other positions, so.
I think what would help is seeing some kind of, not as hierarchy, or seeing somehow like a game plan chart of what those positions are and how they relate to what we have so that if we do push this forward, that I can, or we can speak with some certainty about how we compare and how we're using our resources to the other schools in the district.
Additional comments? Choice next, or?
Yes, we can talk about school choice, so there was also an attachment for that. Our school choice revenue looks to be a little bit up for FY21 compared to FY20, not a ton, but certainly helps. That's based on a charity sheet that was issued in January, late January. So I think when you look at the number here and you see the significant increase over last year's expenditures, it's a little bit shocking. But with that said, we have built the account back up. We do have some reserves that we're, we're planning on having at the end of fiscal year 20. We're looking at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars roughly for a balance rolling into next year, which is quite a significant level, more than what we currently had going into 20, we had ninety-six thousand. So we're doing a good job of putting some money away, which is what we wanted to do going into this budget year. So looking for next year, one way to reduce the Ben Aronbaum budget is to put some of those expenditures on school choice. And it is more than what we would be bringing in for revenue, but we were talking about trying to spend a year in a rear, but we're not there yet. We don't have a year in a rear built up, so we do need to live. Yeah, live, whereas some of the other schools are able to spend what they earned last year. So we're in a little bit different position with that, and short of eliminating additional positions, funds would need to be absorbed either here or in another funding source. And at this point, all of the other funding sources that we have are really exhausted. We're using any grant money that we can, we're using as much early childhood and special education funding as we can. So the primary increase here is in wages. We do have IA's that we added on. There were wage increases, obviously, for existing staff that fall under this line already for FY20, and then that sped transportation. We have a twenty-six thousand dollar increase that we're expecting for next year. So that in itself is a significant addition to this line. Explanation of the funds.
So we were going to use some of the school choice to make repairs to the boiler, is that right?
On the list.
That's accounted for.
Yes.
Right there.
Yep. And even with moving those IA positions on here, we're still looking at having an ending balance that was higher than last year?
Yes, because our revenue is up. And then last year, you know, I wasn't here, obviously, but the budget crisis, I think funds were frozen, and they really, Mark and Judy did a good job of kind of managing what got paid from where, and we were able to end the year in a better position than they anticipated we would, so that's helping build up that surplus. We're looking at going into FY21 with a hundred and sixty-two thousand and leaving FY21 with a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So we're looking at using about ten thousand of our rollover and all of the receiving money that's coming in. And it still leaves the school in, you know, a decent position, and I think there's going to have to be the goal of continuing to try to build that up, not growing it year after year. You know, I feel like we're kind of at a point where if the choice numbers stay where they are, we really can't spend more than we're bringing in, otherwise that's going to quickly get depleted.
Or it would put us right back where we were.
Yeah, anything above seventy K is nothing at all.
I think it's uncomfortable, you know? I don't think that this is the ideal situation for us to be in, but I also think that unless we're deciding to cut several staffing positions down, and maybe that is the end result. I mean, I'm going to have to work with that staffing, and you guys would have to provide some feedback on that, but that's the reality is, you know, as Greg said, it's the increase of salaries, salaries alone.
Yeah, I struggled with when I looked at some of the numbers, that we're moving two IA positions onto school choice, and that was part of what's bringing the budget down or the request down. I struggled with, I feel like we're going like back to where we were. So when I read that, I thought that's not the direction that I want to go in. I felt like going into this year, that was exactly what I did not want to do. I don't know where that leaves us, but in a principal position, that's not what I, I felt like we were going to try to stay away from that.
And I think part of the challenge is also that our other funds are not as healthy as they were. The special education revolving fund, that essentially is getting all eaten up in this year, which helped support the current year's budget numbers slightly. So, you know, pulling that forty-five thousand off of special education, that's our two IA's right there. So, you know, we're borrowing from one pot and putting it in another, you know, is essentially what we're doing. But unfortunately, that account cannot continue to fund that. And then the early childhood revenue for this year, I know that was one of the first conversations that Ben and I had with the new early childhood coordinator was, revenue was down. There's more kids with higher needs coming into the program that don't have to pay, so our tuition income is not as high as we anticipated, and going into next year, we're seeing the same thing happening, so.
And we ended up cutting the extended day program this year for preschool, and that ran from the beginning of the year to Thanksgiving break. Anyone else?
No, now we're just, it's still a discussion, Lawrence. Fair enough.
Wholeistically, from all the schools, we don't usually line up the schools together unless it's in our favor, Frontier's assessment will be down in Sunderland this year, although the budget hasn't been released by Frontier yet, but we know that the enrollment for Sunderland is down eleven students, so that's likely going to cause a savings for the town.
And the transportation reimbursement is up.
Right, and transportation for Frontier will also be down because the reimbursement rate is up, and as you remember, the contract that we just signed, all the increase to that transportation went to the Frontier bill, and what do you know, we've got more transportation funds than we had the year prior. So those are positive things on the global kind of year, you know, with the problem, you know, then we start, the problem is you start playing the game, next year, you've got a larger sixth grade class, we kind of talked about, I imagine it's going to come back around, and Sunderland's going to get hit by this Frontier assessment, but they are going to, when there's winners and losers, they're going to win this year.
And Frontier's budget is.
Has not.
The full budget is.
There's not been a public draft yet.
So it depends on what that number is. I mean, if we're getting lesser percent, if the whole number's still going up a bunch, then, my sense is you're saying, what you're saying so far is assuming that we had the same budget, they had the same overall budget as last year, that we would then have to be paying a smaller share, but they will have some sort of increase when it seems, because they got to pay for salaries too.
There looks to definitely be some.
There's a savings over what it might be, but it's not necessarily less than the number we paid last year.
We anticipate that it will be less than what we paid last year.
You follow, I mean, I, I don't have any information.
Based on the fact that it's in subcommittee right now, which means it's a public meeting, but based on the facts in subcommittee right now, they don't usually raise the percentage, I mean, Keith's on that committee.
Right.
You know, they're not going to be looking to raise the previous number that we presented last time, that previous number has a savings to Sunderland.
Okay.
So they still may bring lower that number.
Oh, the previous number, so the savings you're saying is based on what you proposed for budget?
For the first round in the subcommittee.
I understand.
But like I said, it's kind of difficult to talk, it's kind of careful, you know, not stepping on the committee members' toes that they haven't voted a budget, but.
I don't like that to go.
It's a good, it's lined up because of enrollment, enrollment alone, and I think Frontier overall, and then overall's going to have an okay budget. I hate to say good budgets, people have different, have different quantifications of an okay budget. They don't have a bad budget, let's put it that way. And then, that's even before we looked at, we're looking at paying down percentages of the assessments with E and D, so there's, there's still going to be some other, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying that Sunderland's not going to get hit, get hit hard with a Frontier budget, in fact, they do the best out of all the towns this year for Frontier.
So the four point five, is that, that does include the team leader future?
Yes.
And then if we want to, or if there was a suggestion that not moving the IA's onto school choice to bring forty-two thousand dollars back onto the general fund, which would be according to this, about another one and a half, one and three quarters percent? Yeah, around another forty-five thousand, so.
It's three IA positions, you said?
I think it's two.
So I feel like those are our negotiating positions right now, whether or not that we, as a body, we would, I think, we're not voting to accept a team leader position, right? It's recommendation.
You're voting on budget.
Of whether that's going to be included or not.
Right. I mean, you can, you can within your authority to go into line items of the budget and make recommendations or, you know, those kind of things, but overall.
So really, I mean, everything on the budget is, you're saying, very, everything's tight. The only thing that.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing we can move are the ideas of position, so whether or not, if it's got to go lower, okay, if the committee's got to go lower than the administrative, then we, the best process would be, you know, what do you value in the sense of your planning moving forward that you'd have to cut first? You know, and how you would speak, that we would reduce an IA and try to figure that out, it would cause a, it'd cause a major reshaping, because I think that position is more important. I think the position to manage those cases and provide some relief administratively as well, doing those kind of things, is the most important thing right now. And Ben, it's your, your point to jump in at this point, I know, I know the reduction of IA's also causes a, has multiple effects, because where are you going to pull them from? You have those that are required to have additional support, and then you.
I think the four point five-nine is a, is a needs-based budget and not a want. And, and that's been our, our practice all along, you know? That doesn't take away that, the fact that the numbers are tight across the board, but, you know, for, for me to gather feedback from, from staff and present here, that's, I mean, that's based on discussions and, and everyday life here at SES. So I think what I'm, I mean, what I'm trying to roll around in my head right now is the team leader position, adding that onto the budget, looking at the two IA's that have gone onto school choice, whether or not we put them on school choice or the general budget, and then if that's the case, that we feel like the team leader would be a, might take precedence over one of the IA positions, if we had to choose.
So it doesn't add up that way, because those positions are different positions in what would be moved.
Right.
You know what I mean? And you're just talking about general, you're talking about general stacks, you're talking about employee number, and you're trying to reduce that number to get you that, what's the number we're looking at for IA, you know? If you reduce by one IA, it drops it to three point six.
Yes, one IA is not a full percent, it's about three quarters of a percent.
Because it's also, you're, you're going to cut step one because it's union.
Right.
So step one is just, it's not even twenty thousand a year. You know, so, you know, again.
Right.
I think what might be a better approach, could be a better approach, is to say, you know, to decide on the school choice at that discussion of what you want to do there, and then if we know that we have to roll those two back, what's the dollar amount that we need to reduce the overall by? And then Ben, and Arius, and the testing administrators decide, like, does that equate to IA positions, or does that equate to cutting the team leader? Because my, what I'm hearing is we're not necessarily meaning to decide that by specific positions in this group. If it's fifty thousand, Ben would have the option to use that fifty thousand for the team leader versus two IA's.
I think you captured what I was.
Yeah.
What you presented at our last, the first proposal, according to the last page on this legal sheet, it was taking twenty-seven thousand out of the spec revolving fund. And what, and what you're presenting on this one is taking fifty-six thousand out of the spec.
Yeah, the, the last time that we met, I think I had had the caveat on our summary that I hadn't fully looked at all of those funds yet. School choice was one that I had definitely looked at to start to plan out, but needed to go back to Karen, the spec director, and Amy, the early childhood director, to work out some of those other ones.
Is that something that, that we could get educated on? Because there's obviously been changes in how that is used recently because of all the changes in Horizon program, and the amount of money actually coming in and the amount coming out specifically for that. And sort of my concern is that somewhat, what we ended up going through with the school choice thing was all of a sudden finding ourselves, you know, one year spending every last dollar, and then even if we hadn't had the mistakes, it still would have been like, if you had been looking at the budget at that point on a two-year basis, you would have said, this is crazy, because we're spending every last dollar, and then the next year, just by doing nothing, we're going to have, I'll take a number, fifty thousand less. take a number fifty thousand less, or seventy-five thousand less, or something like that, that we can spend, and, and, you know, the thing's going to blow up in our face. And, um, or at the very least, we should have made crystal clear to everybody involved in this operation, including finance and the select board, that that's what was going on. So there was no looking back, well, why didn't you tell us, or something like that. So I looked at the school choice presentation here, and while I think it's, I wish it was spending a little less, because I wish at least it was spending no more than we think we'll take in, okay? But it's not too much beyond that, but I don't, you know, it's getting at the area where I think that's, you know, I like the trend that we've got, but I don't want to reverse it. It reverses very quickly if you don't watch out. With the sped revolving fund, I don't have a clue, okay? I would love to see a page that laid out, you know, FY20, what we started the year with, what we took in in revenue, or are taking in revenue, what we're spending it on during the year, and then what we're projecting for FY21, which then included the numbers that you've used in building this budget. It was just, we would have a look at it and see, like, for example, I have no idea whether using this number at FY21, that has this ending FY21 with projected sped revolving balance of zero. Okay, and if, and if that's the case, okay, then what's that say about our FY22 budget? When we're, you know, when you say, well, gee, that's next year, we can wait till next year, but we continually get feedback, we've got to think longer term. And it's hard to make that sort of judgment if we don't have the information. And, and I'm going to run the same, exact same argument with the early childhood revolving fund. In other words, there ought to be a nice little one-page thing, just like you got for school choice, same timeframe, you know, coming here and coming here, and same showing where we're looking for year-end numbers, so we see what's available going forward. Because otherwise, we're just like blind as could be.
Yeah, the early childhood is a moving target, so it's, that one's a little bit more complicated. We do have projections in. When I started the beginning of this year, there was not a great model of how funds were being budgeted, so I have a similar workbook like this for early childhood and for special education. Um, and there, it's been shared with my office staff, as well as the directors of those departments, and they're updated by them regularly. So for example, in early childhood, if we take in a student mid-year, or if a student leaves, Amy's going in and updating revenue and tuitions accordingly, and same thing with staffing, if we have staffing moving. So, you know, we definitely have those pieces, they're just not put together in, you know, this format. I can tell you verbally that the special education account, we are using every dollar of the tuition we're receiving from another district, this, for FY21.
And in FY22, will there be that tuition coming in?
Same anticipated.
Same anticipated.
So the problem with, the problem is that, I think what you're trying to ask for is, I understand what you're trying to ask for, we can do a better job of showing you those budgets. However, the budgets change and can change from month to month and year, definitely year to year, and even month to month. And so it's kind of like where the state is waiting to see what its revenues are to depend on how much, what they're going to do for their budgeting and what they're going to give us. We're kind of in the same way within our own revenue thing. So we have a school choice student here who gives us, or several school choice students here that give us a certain amount of money. Now, we can project it to be an issue, they could decide to move in the middle of the summer, and that's a sixty thousand dollar change in the middle, in the middle of the thing. Or we have school choice students, you know, who come or leave, depending on those kind of things, and those numbers go up and down. So our school choice number are also up because our school choice went up.
Right.
By how many, how many spots that was, but, you know, it could go down next year. You know, we, you know, and we have these flux of, of, you know, people coming and going, that kind of thing. So that's the part where it's like, our revenues are not consistent, and so we can take, we can try to project, but, I mean, it goes back to this budget, and Sunderland's budget, elementary schools' budget is so tight that we, any fluctuations in those revenues causes a ripple effect in the whole thing. I think, I know you guys all know that, but it's, it's tighter than any other of these other schools in the sense of that, that they can handle a ripple effect, because they have padding in those different areas.
But, but I still maintain that what you've presented here on the school choice, and all I need to do on my own copy or in my own mind is put by the anticipated revenues for each of the two years, put a big question mark, okay? Because, yeah, that can bounce around a whole bunch, but that's why you keep a cushion. Now, here we are proposing to bend this sped revolving fund down to zero, okay? And yet, if I had a similar sheet like this, there would also clearly be, you know, big question marks by the revenues, just like you said, because we don't know. But, you know, this is how you get yourself in trouble when you, when you eliminate any cushion, and then all of a sudden, you know, not everything goes the way you like it. Now, I'm even willing to do that, okay? If we make it absolutely clear to everybody else at the table, and I don't mean this table, I mean the town table, that that's what we're doing, because, you know, otherwise, we're going to look around next year and something happens, and whoa, instead of taking, you know, fifty-some thousand out of the special revolving fund, you know, maybe we're trying to work off a deficit, and, you know, we can hardly use anything, and then, you know, we already know we're going to get another teacher that, you know, another teacher re, because we've got another section coming the following year, and, and I don't want to be, I think we can do, I think it serves a purpose to show what's going on in those funds, even if we realize you take certain parts of it with a grain of salt. Okay, um, so that's one, that's, that's one thing on both those couple. The number of times I've heard questions here about IAs, okay? I would like just a simple little sheet that says, how many IAs are being funded out of each funding source? Okay? Because, you know, it'd just be nice to have, it'd just sort of make life simpler. Where are they coming, where are they being paid from?
I know that, if you want me to verbally provide that information.
You know, just, you know, current year and projected for the year we're talking about the budget for, okay? And then the other thing I looked at at the last page on this, you know, the whole budget detail sheet, is I looked at, when you presented the one a couple weeks ago, the real, real bottom line, which is last figure of all funds, okay, was three million, six fifty-six. And the real, real bottom line right now on this one is three million, six forty-eight. It's come down eight thousand, okay? And I don't know how that squares with a statement here, to reduce the general fund budget, remove two new IAs, that, what does that mean, remove two new IAs? Does that mean remove, like, two new, two IAs? Because you would say two lines later, change the funding source from two IAs from general fund to school choice.
Right, so the original draft budget that we presented had two additional IAs. So instead of twenty-five, where we're currently at today, there was twen, a request for twenty-seven.
Okay.
So I pulled those out, that was the first cut we made, was, you know, we absolutely can't afford this.
So if you pulled out forty, forty-five thousand, something like that, and yet the overall bottom line only dropped by eight thousand?
Right, because those other funding sources were not fully built up yet. As I had said at the last meeting, I hadn't fully.
But it wasn't, that's not a matter of funding source, that's a matter of, of, you know, that's what we're spending, irregardless of funding source. So have other things been added back in here?
No, I'll, I'll do a check and compare everything.
I'm just saying, I'm surprised that it only gone down eight thousand.
This time to last time, but we did not add anything at all. All we did was cut or change funding sources, so I'll have to look at the two spreadsheets and compare them.
Okay. Um, now, I don't know, maybe Elliot knows, but I've got a feeling Elliot probably is still a little early in the process. I don't know what the towns' finances look like for this budget cycle. I know that there will be at some point some additional tax income, tax revenue from the new development. I don't know the timing of that as to when it, when it hits the books. I know, and I think, I think you said it and communicated it to you, that I'm pretty darn sure there's no appetite any place for another override vote. So that, you know, at this point, I don't know what's, you know, what the, what the town can, can, can pay for and what the town can't pay for. So that I think it would be useful to work on, you know, a less desirable option. You know, at least in your own, you probably already have in your own mind, but I don't know if it's.
Let me push back on that, because, so our job, as my administrative team's job, is to put together what we need. Your job is to tell you what we can afford. And where I see the disconnect, and especially in, in Sunderland, is that we don't know what the finance committee can afford. And so how do you make your decision? And this is kind of like, I think this is the part where this kind of system's broken, especially when you have multiple tight budgets year after year. When there's extra, when there's wiggle room by, by all sides, then there is a year where you give a little bit more, there's a year you don't give, you know, and there's that kind of ongoing conversations, but if the apartment complex brought in additional revenues this year, okay, and Frontier is down, then the around a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we're kind of, I'm throwing in a guess at number of the total expenditures increased in schools, may not be a problem to fund. And so then we're talking about cutting a budget and cutting what we deliver to students based on.
That you didn't have to.
And we didn't have to, because we don't have the, the two sides, you know, you know, that kind of thing. And so there's a part of me that says we should move forward with what our needs are. You come to, if I bring forward two numbers, I'll tell you which one's going to be picked. You know what I mean? It's going to be, one's going to be reduced.
We didn't last year.
Okay. Well, we had to go for an override last year, it's very different, you know what I mean? We're not talking about overrides here for the camera and that kind of stuff, you know what I mean? That's not, that's not the, the game plan here. You know, the question is what number, what number compared to the other needs of the town? Because I have no, and I have no idea what the other needs of the towns are, you know what I mean? And we both, and I kind of said this last year, the two and a half percent has never been a real number, so it's kind of like, it's like the, it's like the speed limit. And, you know, when it was fifty-five, it was, it was a suggestion, everybody's going sixty-five. You know what I mean? And that can go back to multiple years, where the budgets came at ninety and a hundred, and the select board said you should be, or the finance committee said, I don't know who was saying it, but you should be around seventy on increase, but we were coming in closer to a hundred. You know, now, this total budget's around, again, you said, I'm running numbers by you, but envelope numbers was around just over a hundred and ten, if Frontier's down total for education. So that might be within the wheelhouse of what the finance committee's looking at, and they could say, you know what? Or they could say, put more on it this year, you know, start to build your funds up for something else. You know what I mean? That's the kind of thing, it's.
Yeah, I mean, one, I, I understand that, and I, and, I mean, part of me is thinking, I think what Keith is thinking, that, maybe it's a little different, it's just, if you're concerned about, that we're maybe, or if I'm concerned, maybe they were taking more than I care for out of school choice, and certainly restricting our options going ahead for this sped revolving fund by draining that, then, you know, maybe the number, you know, on the town part ought to be, you know, twenty grand higher and twenty grand less coming out of the funds. Or something.
Right.
Or something, okay? But part of that is, you know, you're absolutely right, we've got to find out, we don't know what the overall picture is.
Right.
Okay, and Elliot, you got any wisdom on that?
So there are major, there are some, some major increases coming from, uh, the radios, the radio, there's just, major increases coming from radio release, but we're, we're, we're just starting at the.
Just starting.
Right now.
So we have a meeting with you on March second.
Right.
You know, and so at that time, we'll also have Frontier's numbers, because Frontier meets next Tuesday, and they should, I imagine, be moving forward with a tentative budget to move forward to the towns. It's unlike last year, where Frontier and Sunderland both were having multiple meetings, playing catch up due to the, you know, in our business office transition. You know, I think the budget's in a pretty solid place for the Frontier committee to decide how it wants to handle it. I imagine, you know, it's their budgets, their committee, but it's in a good place for us to have a smooth discussion and decide how to move forward. So we will have strong numbers, they'll have, they'll be able to see the total asks by March second. And so the question is, I think, for this committee has to decide, is what number is being brought forward to March second? You know, and if, again, that's before our public, our public hearing on the budget is.
Whatever.
Seventeenth.
Third week of March.
Okay, it's Tuesday the seventeenth is our public hearing, and so that's when we have to have the real, what we're moving forward.
Let me ask you another question. There's nothing in here that, I don't think there's anything in here that deals with the possible costs of a chunk of students coming from the new development?
No, but as we had discussed previously, based on the current enrollment numbers at each grade level, we would have to have a significant, significant bump of students that were born in, at the same time period to make a true impact.
That's on, that's on the classroom population, this classroom population. How about, how about for busing?
For busing, we have approximately, and I, and I got your message, and we, I'll get those exact numbers.
See, I just want to be, I, I just want to be clear with Elliot and with the select board that here is the situation as far as space available in classrooms, space available on the bus, okay? And then the third one, where there's no space available, is extra sped costs, okay? They're all unknown, okay, that we're writing a budget for with, with no provisions for any of those. And so I think we ought to make it clear, both, you know, on the, on the first two, the classroom sizes, the classroom populations, and the busing, this is what we've got for flexibility.
Seven.
Okay. How many seats are supposed to be, because you're concerned.
Yeah.
But we know your bus stop.
No.
But I just, I, I think it just.
When Ben and I looked at, so we looked at the other apartments building complexes in the area, and we shared those numbers, and we said, if the same percentage per unit goes into the new development, then we would justify, we're talking about, it wasn't even, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't overflow. And as Ben said, unless they're all in second grade, then why are we a problem? You know what I mean? But, you know, given the regular flow, it's not the numbers. But they're right, the services will go up, and amongst those students, the likelihood, if you put fifteen million students, you're percentage-wise, three of them need to have special needs, and the level of those special needs are, you know, your, you know, role on that as well, how high those needs are and what those costs increase at school, without extra revenue brought to the school.
So shouldn't we just be real clear on that possibility? Because otherwise, it's like, oh, Chris, you know, we gave you two and a half million dollars, whatever, you know, how many million dollars, so on, and we'll take it out of your budget. You know, to whatever additional costs are coming in associated with that. Whereas if we say, this is what the budget is based on, very specifically, okay? And here's, I mean, I, I, I don't think it's asking a lot in terms of preparation time or something, just, here's our classroom populations, and here's what our max is, and so we got this much room, and here's what our busing max is, and here's how many are on that bus route, okay? And then the sped is unknown, okay? But then say, if we exceed in the first two things, the classroom populations and the busing, if we exceed, happen to exceed one of the numbers, even though we don't think we will, we're going to come back for help, rather than having to find it in our budget, because we don't have room, okay? And in the sped one, suppose we get a couple of serious sped cases walk in from there. What are we going to do? If we're going to go back for help, we've got to make it clear then at this point in the process, that that's not in there.
But those are, statistically speaking, I wouldn't be betting on that.
I'm not betting on it, that's why we're not asking, that's why we're not putting, we're not putting.
But are you, are you saying that we should say that because revenue will be up, because of the suburban complex, the school should get a share of that revenue?
I'm saying that, let me, let me put it this way. The town budgets, think of unpredictable things, okay?
Yeah.
Unpredictable, one of the unpredictable things in the town budget is snow and ice removal.
Right.
The town budgets for snow and ice removal are basically having some number, but basically an understanding at the end of the year, to figure out how much of a deficit they went into, and they just have, you know, that just gets paid.
Will transfer from free catch.
Transfer, right. And nobody gets real excited about it, okay? And we just understand that you haven't got in the budget enough for those unknown events, okay? To me, that's a similar situation, because we got a more specific unknown event this year, okay? Then we have, I mean, this. Okay, then we have, I mean, it's always the unknown event in the school. Who walks in the door each September or who walks in any time of the year and what sort of cost do they bring with them? Okay, here's one that's potentially more, you know, much more unusual, just because there might be, and I'm a little more worried because a quarter of those apartments are supposed to be for affordable. Okay, which may be more likely to be, uh, satisfy the rules when you got a family of three or four or five than a family of one or two that just are adults. So I just, you know, I just feel like it's in our interest to be clear that, you know, what our risks are, even though, you know, a couple of them may be smaller, but I'd like to be clear. And then the one in special ed, just to sort of say, you know, I'm even sort of, I'm happy sitting there saying, what do you want us to do if we get a couple of serious sped issues come in from this possible new population?
Just really to ask the question, I assume like this is an issue any year and it can happen with or without apartments.
Right.
And the circuit breaker, I mean, what?
That's the following year.
That's the following year.
And you get paid back a year later.
So you'll get reimbursed in the following year. So what we would end up using is what do we have for our, what's our E and D? What is our free cash? Is school choice?
Right.
Yep. And so the question is, what did you, what did schools do prior to school choice? Having school choice reserves? Well, one of multiple things, one, you may have to make mid-year cuts in order to meet needs, which is an awful place to be. And two, you go to town and you ask for town to, um, either, you know, you get on the mid, mid-season town meeting and you say, we need additional funding for such and such emergency, you know, and, um, there were some towns, and I think if they mentioned this to this group, that there was some towns that, when I was in Pellman School Committee, they had, the town had a
They had an account.
Had a warrant every year for, you know, it's probably before they started billing up, you know, school choice, never touched it once school choice started going. But they had a warrant that was just, was thirty thousand dollars for an unforeseen special, um, special needs need. And you could go to the town to get that money. I mean, that's, again, I think that was probably put in the place and then kept on the books prior to school choice and, you know, Pellman had a school choice bank account, so to speak.
All right, well, I was just, whatever. Just for broad understanding, those apartments haven't been occupied yet, have they?
No.
When does, does the town foresee revenue coming in next year?
I don't know.
And then I, there's a couple of other things. I thought I heard that we had, there were twenty-four IAs, but then you said twenty-five?
Yeah, so there, there's funds earmarked in the current year budget from the IDEA grant to pay for a halftime position from now through the end of the year. That position's not been filled, but we've accounted for that next year.
Okay.
So this year it makes it twenty-four and a half if we do fill that position.
How long does that grant last?
Um, we get the grant every year, but it, we're basically getting additional funding to support this. We won't be able to get it next year.
And now of those twenty-four and a half, seven are one-to-ones?
That's what you said there.
Okay. Can I get one more?
That's all right. Questions, okay. Any? The other important thing is interesting to me in early childhood is that they have, it's, students are coming in as they become of age, so.
And, and we're looking at, um, five to seven students coming into the early childhood classes, starting from January second through the end of the year.
This year.
This year. Yep. To the, um, to the point where right now we have, um, between the two classrooms for IAs and two classroom teachers. And, um, next year, the placement that I've put together has five instructional assistants and two classroom teachers.
Because of the needs.
Are any of those one-to-ones?
Um, it's, it's kind of a different model, I guess, in, in preschool. You know, it's more, more of a self-contained and, um, but some, but some of the students need that extra close support for, for safety. Um, and if you look at, um, if you were to look at the breakdown of where we have support across the building, a lot of that is front-loaded in grades, um, pre-K through two. Um, so that, um, you know, it's the, the early intervention acts as the best, um, model to help the students experience success as they become more independent.
We added a position a couple of years ago, a year ago, early childhood interventions?
Yep.
Do we have the proper term?
Yep.
Has that worked out as hoped?
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, do we need any direction going forward? What the, what we want to do or how we?
Well, on the second, I say I'm gonna be meeting with the select board. You guys are really cool with the select board and the finance committee to propose what we're doing this year. So if you don't have a decision coming out tonight, what you're doing this year, either you're gonna have another meeting or.
Make it up on the spot.
Make it up on the spot or take what you have now going to that, you know what I mean? It's a.
I don't see a I mean, certainly taking what we have now going to that is fine as long as we understand that I wouldn't feel locked into like that's what we got to, you know, present through the whole process. You know, right up to the public hearing and then vote on it. I mean, it's, is that?
Well, I mean, either, either you bring a budget forward that you believe is the needs of the school.
Right.
Until you get told that we can't, we can't, we can't support those needs, we're gonna have to actually to go back and, and even though it's your needs we're asking, you know what I mean? There's.
But if we go with this to the select, meeting with the select on the second month.
Yep.
Depending upon the outcome there, it may be like, okay, great, we're all set with this, or it may be that, you know, well, we gotta, you know, have a war going on.
Yep, we'll keep the dialogue alive. Um, just to touch on, Keith, we're, we're planning on retreating nine K in the, uh, choice money. That's on, on paper, right?
Wow, man.
What do you mean? We're from one sixty-three to one fifty-two.
Yeah, right.
Right, year-end balance. Right, and that's, that's the wrong direction. We know it's the wrong direction. Does it make sense to do that this year or do we put a stake in the sand and say, not a step backwards and try to move and does this number move up?
Right, well, that's where I'm coming from. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting with a stake in the sand saying we can't put anything on school choice, not after what we went through last year. It has to be, I feel like I, I made a commitment last year that we're gonna try to rectify school choice and we weren't gonna go the other direction this year. So, I mean, I'm looking at the two IAs, I'm like, this is exactly what we said we would do. And I would, I would, I would much rather move them off onto the, the general budget.
I would like to go with those two back onto the general budget.
And say this is what we, this is what we said we would do.
I'd like to start there.
Wait, I'm sorry.
So we would like the two IAs in this version that got moved down to school choice. We would like to see them back onto the general budget with what we take forward to the selectmen.
So you're going to add two percent of, basically almost two percent to this?
To the general.
And then we have, I would say we're bringing forward on those two budget. So we're asking the, we're, you mean, is then we're bringing a budget that we know the town can't afford and?
That gives them the chance to say that to us and that gives us something that we can do. But last year when we went, this was the trouble we were in and we said we weren't gonna do this again.
So if we take both those off though, then we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be bringing forth a school choice balance of?
Two hundred.
Was that?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand at the end of the year. I mean, the difference from last, the difference from last year is that last year we had a projected year-end balance of for the current year, this was a year ago, the projected current year was, was like seven thousand and that was already after some serious cutting of stuff. And some serious rerouting of funds. Um, and a projected balance for the end of this current year of, uh, fifty grand. Okay, and now here we are, uh, the projected balance for the current year right now, end of year is a hundred and sixty-two grand. How do you get from fifty to a hundred and sixty-two? It got there because last year's number was, uh, like, uh, I think it was sixty, seventy thousand, sixty thousand higher than expected. That you had some year-end funds that you put into there that we then used for the art room improvements. And did we even put a little more in there? I think we haven't used. Um, and then the expected revenue for, uh, the coming year, we use it for budget is back up to, you know, it's up a hundred grand from what we were planning on for this year. So the number's way up.
So that number.
So that to me is like, you know, I don't feel nearly so unhappy with a hundred and fifty grand as I was feeling last year when we were talking about, and then the process was fifty.
So, I mean, so in these fluctuating budgets, we talked about it's nine, you say it's nine thousand, whatever. It's very likely that the end of this school year, we're gonna have ten thousand dollars remaining.
Yeah.
From our budget. So we have all these, you have all these, and that's the, that's the complicated part of these budgets. And I know I'm probably saying stuff that you guys all understand, but we have a lot of budgets that we don't know where they're going to end up. We know they'll end up, we're in the clear, we're not overspending, but as we come down, you know, things from like professional development where, you know, we, we have to hold money aside for teachers for professional development, if they don't all use their money, let's couple, couple thousand dollars saved there, or maybe, we'll say just five hundred, keep it even small number. They all add up to, at the end of the year, especially last year when we did a budget freeze, because we were worried about, you know, making it to the end of the year, there was actually a larger number that was actually in savings in order to create that, that cushion. And so this year, that, that number is gonna probably be a little bit larger, but as I just kind of, that's my side conversation with Shelley, is do you talk about that? We said, but you can't guarantee it, because we could also spend it all down. But realistically, we're more, we've been a conservative school for multiple years, as Ben can remember. Um, but, you know, there's probably gonna be additional savings on that. So what's gonna happen is you're gonna, you know, that number's going to be a little bit larger next year with the savings.
Well, what it sounds like is the ten thousand isn't even necessarily the concern.
It's the.
It's, it's thirty thousand. Let's, even if we could get that ten thousand off, it's still thirty thousand that it sounds like you're uncomfortable with.
Cause I get, cause the next, what do we do next year? What do we do next year when, you know, if school choice goes down and now we have that as a budget that I don't, I get.
See, I'm actually, to me, it's, it just is a nice, easy argument if we use the same number for anticipated expenses for next year as we have for anticipated revenue. Okay, which means instead, you know, use the three thirty-six instead of the three forty-five.
And we're trying to figure out how to get a position to help with the special needs.
Right.
Without, we're increasing staffing without increasing revenues on any, on any level. And so how do you do that?
Right.
And so it's, that's the impossible task, I guess. And so, um, that's why, you know, I mean, you're just shifting things around. Okay, we'll put the IAs back on, then we're gonna put this new position on, it's school choice. It's just the same number, we're just, we're just jockeying onto different, onto different line items.
Right.
Um, you know, you know, quite frankly, you could put it on the school choice and then cut the position the following year. I mean, you know, we couldn't afford it, but it, you know what I mean?
Do we need to vote on something here or are we just giving you?
Well, I think we need to know what direction we're going in for March second. Either we're leaving things as they are and this is what we're presenting, um, which would mean that you need to be comfortable with the school choice numbers and comfortable with the, um, four point five nine. Or are we moving some things around? Um, and does that mean that, you know, if we're putting the two IAs back to local, are you saying, okay, let's go with the higher increase, or are you wanting us to maintain the four point five nine with bringing the two IAs back? Which means we need to cut some, something else.
The other, um, one thing that wasn't brought up is bringing one IA back to local and one on, keeping one at school choice and just splitting the difference.
That was my next. Yeah.
Go around.
You can't take credit for his thing after. I was about to say that.
Did my experience.
Yeah, I was just looking at.
And, and I, I, I remember discussions last year how we were looking to have an ending, ending balance in school choice around seventy thousand at, at the minimum each year. Um, give, give or, give or take, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm just, uh, not, not remembering it correctly. Um, but now we're looking, we're, we're double that. Um, so it is, it has grown and so we're obviously in, in better shape, but, and there's always the unknowns which we've discussed as well.
And my sense is that, I mean, the thing with the school choice number as opposed to chapter seventy money is chapter seventy money uh, is like, you know, that's pretty surely not gonna change if anything significant at this point.
Right.
Um, school choice, you don't know what the number is until the year's over because it's what, it's based on actuals for the year. It's not based on anybody passing some legislation and saying a number and this, and the cherry sheet can have a number, but the number, what really matters is what the actuals are. And my sense is this year, just on your monthly enrollment reports, that the school choice, uh, which was, I think, forty-eight and a half average kids for the previous year, which, where that number ended up, and this year is running fifty or, you know, touch more. And so that number shouldn't be any lower than, you know, what it was before. So I'm, you know, I'm less worried than I would be otherwise, that, because at least through seven months, the numbers are okay. Yeah.
Yeah, so which, of those two IAs, which, which ones are they on here?
Um, I don't know specifically. You could pick any two. I, I tried to pick two that were, one that was on the higher end and one that was on the lower end when I moved them off. So you're probably looking at forty-five thousand, forty-eight thousand if we were to move both of them back.
But to move one?
You could move the lower one at about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand, or the higher one, I think, was like twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand. I don't remember what department they work in though. It doesn't really matter.
So doing that would eliminate the, the nine thousand dollar retreat.
If you went to the, yeah.
And it would also keep the, the increase to this four point five at under one percent.
Yeah, it'd be like five and a half. Or five point three or something like that.
I think I can be comfortable with that.
Elliot?
I can confidently tell you that I, I don't know a hundred percent right now. I can't advise you about the exact numbers of what we can afford, but I can tell you politically, when I mentioned last night, when I met with my committee, and I mentioned the eight point three two that I had gotten on the first draft, there was hackles quote up very high. And I, I can tell you if you put both of them back on and it's going up in the area of six-two, there's still, there's gonna be an incredible pushback and there's gonna be, there's gonna be a great deal of frustration over the consequences of the last two years in a row, especially last year. And I, I certainly understand, Keith, where we're coming from and, and having this, being built back up is definitely positive, but we, we're not gonna be able to, there's gonna be, there's gonna be smoke coming out of people's ears if we're at six and a half percent.
What's your opinion at the four point six?
At four point six where we are, I think it's, I mean, where this is, this is doable.
Because, and again, what Darius was saying was that
Especially.
if you take that together with the Frontier number.
Yep.
Then you're looking at, instead of a hundred and forty increase, you're looking at a hundred and ten increase for both of the big, the big two items in the budget.
I mean, then that's, that's a gamble, but it sounds like it's, it's likely, but I mean.
Well, we'll have that, there'll be no gambling at the time. We, we'll have that number at that meeting. Like I said, next Tuesday, we'll, you know, it'll be, you know, I imagine, right after they make that vote, we can push that out to people and let them know what that number is.
I think if you're willing, if you're willing to put it to five, what was, ends up at five, four or something?
If you change one IA, that would make it about five, three, five, four.
Yeah. I think there's, that's, there's gonna be arguments, but I think.
One of the reasons that, like, I'm, I'm taking this is, as I'm looking at, I feel like those, the people with the smoke coming out of their ears are the very people I promised I wouldn't, we wouldn't do this again. So it's almost, I feel like that, that's who, that's who we're serving right now.
And that's understandable. It's rocking the armpits, but you know, I'm, we're looking at one of these is just boiler repair. That's one I have to position right there, almost entirely. So it's.
What's the, uh, what's the, um, you put sped transportation in there. Is that all the sped transportation or a part of it?
It's part of it. Wait, ask me the question again. Are you talking about the part that's on the school choice?
You transferred, you transferred, uh, twenty-six thousand. You transferred, you transferred, uh, twenty-six thousand of sped transportation money into-
I didn't transfer it, we need to add it, it's in addition to-
Fine, okay, what I, what I'm saying is that, instead of doing twenty-six thousand, you could do seventeen thousand, and then the school choice number would be right, year to year. But nine thousand back in the regular budget.
That was more what I was thinking is-
Nine thousand back in the, in the regular budget, which is three-tenths of a percent, four-nine.
To, to clarify, that's taking this off of the anticipated expenses and just-
Just knocking down by nine thousand what you take out of school choice, so that your number anticipated in your balance is the same for the two years. Okay, um, and then, you know, that's, that's the, the way to do that with the smallest amount possible is to do it like with that sped transportation money, because you can take any number you want there, you don't have to take a whole position.
What would you do? We can do anything we want, we can do a partial position.
Oh, whatever, yeah.
You can, you can come back and say you want the number to be whatever, you're better off saying it that way, and then, then having Shelley and her crew decide, you know, what's the easiest way to do it. Because you wanna have some kind of system to your madness.
And so, Elliot, what I heard, heard you say is that, you know, obviously, you know, with the past couple cycles, you know, coming in with a high number is not doable, and I think we know that, right? But is there any part, um, where either the administration or school committee could be more transparent, so, you know, we just wanna make sure that when we present that, whatever that final number is, so that there's just a clear outline of, of where we're coming from?
I, it really doesn't seem like, it seems that the numbers are all here, and it's just rock and a hard place.
Right, okay.
I mean, aside from, Peter has initially pointed about, you know, the, the sped revolving fund, but that's entirely, it's not, right?
That's a decision.
You know, I mean, there's a point, I mean, you don't care how you get there, you're just looking at the number that's, you're looking at the bill. Right, you don't care what we eat, you don't care what we eat for dinner, you care what the wage day for bill, yeah, so. You don't care how much we enjoy dinner. If it was all vegetables, there's-
As a citizen of the town, who cares?
Right.
Right, he also wants as good a school as possible, as good a town as possible, and all the same stuff.
So, am I hearing that we want this to, we wanna make some change on school choice?
What do you want, what do you want the school choice number to be?
So, I'm, I'm sorry, okay, so the other, um, question that, you know, don't need to have answered, but just wanna reiterate what, what Darius said, if, um, if the budget is growing by two and a half percent, just with regular costs, contractual and operating costs, if that's, if that's happening on a, on a yearly basis, and there is the need for growth, that's just a discussion to, to have, I think, at the, at the town level. You know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, and I don't know what the answer is, because right now, I mean, we're the, and we, and we've got through the, you know, the first, this year for negotiations, but the, the issue was that the actual percentage of salaries that moved up was four point seven? Is that this, am I in the right, am I in the right school? It was around four point seven just in the salary line alone. So we started talking, that's eighty percent of your budget, there's no way we can do two and a half. And so the question is, moving forward, those other lines, we can't, there's no way we're supposed to reduce those other lines. And then, obviously, the buildings are now twenty years old, or whatever the age of this building is, and the number of capital numbers, members are going up too at the same time. So I don't, I don't know, and, and watch full transparency, you know what I mean? And it's, it's also, and that's what I'm saying, it's also difficult when schools take up the, you know, and I forget the percentage of, suddenly when we take up at sixty to seventy percent of the town's budget, and we don't even know what the-
For me, it's more-
We don't even know what the revenue side is, we just kinda hand a seventy percent of your budget's billed, with not, not knowing, it's gonna be, again, going back to the restaurant, we're ordering dinner without knowing who's paying, or not knowing who, what, how much money we have in the wallet for this particular meal.
Now, the two and a half is just such an arbitrary, integrated number at this point. You know, you close the doors, you open them up, and the building's more expensive beyond anything, so.
Right.
Uh, so I think that the, kind of the choices we're looking at right now, I think would be like moving one IA off, or taking that nine thousand off sped transportation, or whatever, however.
So, you, what, basically, it's just say, you wanna say, you wanna see level funding school choice, level expenditures of school choice.
We wanna spend what we, what we expect to take, what they're saying you're gonna take in, is that we don't wanna spend any more than that.
If I can, and I, I think what I would like to do is to have all this hold hands in front of the select board and say, here's, maybe it's four point eight-nine, and that's what it's gonna take for us not to have a decrease in the choice in the plan. And if you want a number that's lower than that, either we gotta make some tough choices, or we've gotta plan on making a retreat in our choice revolving, is that?
Yeah, and that's-
I think it's a better position to go in there and say, we're gonna spend what we plan, what we're expected to take in, and not more.
I would, yeah, I, I just didn't, after last year, I felt like I committed to the select board and the finance committee that we, you know, we're not gonna put more salaries on school choice, we're not gonna go back where we are. I do think that, um, being able to have it level funded is, is equally, equally important. If we are gonna put salaries on there, at least it's, we're not gonna be losing money, I can work with that. The one thing that jumps out to me is if we take an IA salary off, then, then the general budget goes up to about five point two-three in that area. If we just do the nine thousand, it's gonna be like a four point eight, four point nine, and I think that difference between four point nine and five point one-
Yeah, not to do the four something.
Is huge.
Yeah.
Just when people just look at that number.
You're at the clothing store, and it's nineteen ninety-nine as opposed to twenty.
Yeah, that's why, that was the reason for doing just the nine thousand.
So I ju, I just did this, and if, if we pull one IA off and put the IA back to local, it's five point four. And then if we do the seventeen thousand to, with the, if we did seventeen thousand, um, it's five point one-seven, so we're still gonna be over five.
But we're saying that just change, change the-
Just nine?
Just nine.
Take nine thousand-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Off of the spending.
Heard the seventeen before.
Take nine thousand off of the spending.
So that'll put us on the five then, just on the five.
So that, whatever it takes, so the anticipated year-end balance for twenty-one is the same as the, I'm sorry, as the, um, anticipated year-end balance for FY twenty.
And to Darius' point, we're gonna probably do better, we think, we think we can do better. We're not gonna, our plan walking in-
But the point of having a cushion is you don't know, Steve.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think that's a stronger position going in than just some arbitrary, I mean, it's sort of like the reason to take to that number, which puts you at a four, or four-nine.
Okay, okay. You live with that?
Yes.
I was gonna think about that, too, after.
You live with that? And to me is-
I think fly with Keith getting all the credit.
If it goes wrong, it was his idea, I just thought of it first.
I second that. And so, I mean, and are you, like, are you guys okay with that?
So what we'll do is we will draw this up. I'm speaking for Shelley, because she's coming over to work on this. Um, Shelley will draw this up, and we will send it out to unless, if there's a major problem with it, then we can respond. If you can, obviously, do, do business via email, but you can respond back. And I can respond to the whole committee that we're crawling, and we can decide. We have to beat again if things aren't, or if you have individual kind of concerns, you can actually individually, and then, um, we have the general idea.
And Shelley, you, it was like, it ended up, it, it will end up someplace four-eight, four-nine, four-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, Shelley, I don't know if you, just put that in your pocket. So it looks like we're gonna present something that will come in at four-eight to four-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, with having our school choice expenditures matching our projected revenue for the year. So we're not digging into the school choice money.
All right. So, on to the, uh, review, Union Thirty-Eight, uh, one-year settlement agreement?
Followed by a vote?
So, um, I would recommend putting that at the end.
Okay.
Only because you're allowed to go to executive session to discuss it if you need to.
Fair enough.
Or we can just go ahead and vote it, it's up to you. I mean, either way, I don't mean to-
Is there any, um, can we just vote it?
Good. So basically, I'll say what it is, and then you can just, you decide. So basically, you know, as that email I sent out, we are looking for a one-year agreement that is backdated to July one, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth of this year. And we're talking about a one percent increase for steps three through thirteen, and a two percent increase for steps fourteen to twenty. Fourteen and twenty. And we are going to continue to go right back into negotiations for a three-year contract, and we're looking to set up those talks already, so.
Okay, but that, yeah, we get with one percent for steps?
Three to thirteen.
Yep.
Two percent for steps fourteen and twenty.
Great. Just got one quick question, I don't think it's, anything that's, you still have an executive session, but does, does the negotiation start from scratch again, or do they start from where they?
We're gonna, we're gonna pick up where we left off, because we did, we did a lot of work that hasn't to do with finances before that. I think both sides agreed to that, and we just wanna talk more about, um, I'll just talk about, and you guys can say, you wanna go to executive session, I'll say, but basically, in the last round, um, the teachers proposed a uh, different kind of salary, a different way to address the salary, um, gap between frontier and Union Thirty-Eight, and the proportion of money, which is gonna take a lot of back and forth and conversation, that we basically said we're concerned that may take several months. And perhaps we should start with a one-year settlement to kind of bring down some of the, the tensions around this, and so they kind of re, and re come to the table to talk about this new idea. And so the, the negotiating committee was open to looking at this new idea, but the caveat was there's a lot of questions behind it, and that, it's like, kind of feels like we're starting from scratch on the finance end, and so that was the, that's kind of where we left off, and that's why, so, yeah, we're, we're gonna continue negotiation, but we're gonna be looking again, both sides, I imagine, on a three-year contract.
The motion that we approved, the one-year agreement with the Union Thirty-Eight teachers?
So moved.
What second?
All in favor? Sign your way, sir.
God, policies.
Four? Eight, sir. All right, policies. All right, so you received, we received, and so just gases before meeting, but actually, it's probably good for me to kind of go through it. So we're part of MASC, uh, Association of School Committees, and they they kind of give us updates on policies that we should be updating, okay? And so they've sent out, out thirty policies to update. Um, some of them are just small language things, and so whereas we're going through them, um, Don and I are both, you know, Don's kind of the head of keeping track of our policies, which ones are which, which versions, that kind of stuff. But we're going through them, we're, we're gonna bring forward the ones that are most significant, and then just show the ones that, we'll probably put them all on there, but the, there's some that are significantly changed, or some is like, it's one line, or, you know, that kind of thing. So they probably all have to be brought back for, for school committee, but remember our policy, and so you've got this policy newsletter, which is really, is really your Cliff Notes onto what the changes to the policy are, okay? Um, a lot of them are regulations on things that we rarely run into, it's good to have a policy in case it comes up, because it follows either a new law, or, um, you know, either court cases, which will be law, um, but, you know, trying to keep us out of getting in, you know, getting into trouble, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, remember our policy thing is we have a first-time reading and then a second-time vote. Now, it's just the reading of the first group of policies. The first one is, I don't know how you wanna do this, one to them all, let me just kind of go through each one.
One, one.
I mean, I'll just kind of give you the brief overview of where they're at. The first one is a new educational equality, is a new MASC policy, basically looking to make sure that, um, making sure that, you know, that all, all students, um, are being treated equally, and, um, and such. The second policy is equal education opportunities, which was updated by MASC in February. I'm trying to find a summary.
In recognition of the diversified characteristics and needs of our students, and with a keen desire to be responsive to them, the school committee will make every effort to protect the dignity of the students as individuals.
So that, I was looking for this, that was, that was the, the actual thing, I was trying to look for the, the summary on that. And then the next one is the homeless students enrollment, rights and services. It feels like we just did that, but then they, they updated it again. And basically, you know, it's, it's talking about, you can't restrict students from enrolling if they are homeless, and the different rights that, that follow to that. And where regarding homeless students, living arrangements should be considered a new student education record, not direct reinformation, such records may not be disclosed without the consent of a parent or satisfaction of another student privacy-related exemption. And it talks about students being able to stay in their, their school of origin, you know, basically, they're trying to create less disruption to students who are, um, whose, you know, lives have found them to be homeless and in transition, that kind of thing, where they're trying to keep them in the same school, it's a good concern. And then, um, so kind of, that's the overview there. Um, the other one, the next one is, uh, educational opportunities for military children. The update has been updated to reflect expanded definition of eligible students, which now includes not only children of active-duty personnel, but children who are veterans who have been severely injured and medically discharged, and children of active-duty personnel who dies on active duty. So again, small language change on military children. And then educational opportunities for children in foster care. Attendance rights by living in attendance areas, other student assignment policies, or intra, or inter-district choice options are available for students in foster care and homeless families. The same, on the same terms as families who reside in the district, according to the district, will provide transpiration services to the school no matter compared with the transpiration provided for all other students in the district. So, um, that's a, a highly of change there. So again, small things are the rules that we have to follow when working with those, um, with students in foster care, students in, um, opportunities for military children as well, so. Yeah, I mean, with testing compliance, I was on this policy subcommittee. When there were little footier policies, we could debate them.
Yep.
This kind of stuff, you pretty much have to register. These are pretty straightforward, I mean, and, and there was, you know, the question, this was brought up, I think, at the frontier meeting, was that frontier meeting, Keith, where they kind of talked about, well, so the sub-frontier has a subcommittee for policies alone, should that committee get together and review all these? I mean, these are such boilerplate ones, it's, you know, it's different than when you're having, you're changing what you're doing. This is, you know, there's not much argument that we should be doing these things, and it's following the law. And so you could expand on it, but, yeah. I think it's pretty straightforward. So anyways, that's a first-time reading, you can look them over if you have any questions. Um, if you feel free to grab me outside of school time, so to speak, outside of business time, and I can try to answer, or just give me questions to the next meeting. But if you have a really complicated question, give me a heads up, so I can be sure I can get the data on that one. All right? All right, we'll vote those next time.
Yeah, committee reports. Collaborative?
Uh, collaborative meeting the other night. There's a presentation on vaping and tobacco by a parent group, which included like lessons that could be used at different grade levels. Uh, they went over their budget. Higher separation, uh, let's see. And then, a seminar on social justice at UMass at March fourteenth that they advocated for, um, a special education, uh, spending gap bill that they're trying to find support for. Uh, and then they went over a lot of the, the different stuff on the, um, Student Opportunities Act. And the meal was good.
Just curious, the special, uh, education gap, what specifically is the gap?
What we're mandated and what we're paid for.
It's that when the, um, the Student Opportunity Act passed, they were assuming that schools would have sixteen percent of students in special education spending twenty-five percent of their day in special education services. And this bill is actually written and sponsored by Jo Comerford, who, um, believes that that is a significant underestimate. So she's commissioning a, she's trying to get this bill passed to commission a study to prove that that's an underestimate so that then downwind can adjust the funding.
Yeah. There was some discussion about the, the, how the Student Opportunities Act was being, was sold as a major, um, change in budget spending and that the, um, the actual repercussions of it are not exactly realities. It's not what, what was being promoted for all districts. Some districts are gonna, are gonna see some help, but not, it's not gonna be this watershed change like it's kind of being sold to be.
All right, chapter seventy, money's up a little under one percent.
Joe and Natalie did a, an event at our town hall, was it just last week, um, with the joint select boards and somebody started by saying, thank you for passing the Student Opportunity Act. And Joe said, don't thank us.
Yeah.
You're not benefiting from it.
Thanks for coming, Elliot.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Uh, principals report. Last Thursday, January thirtieth, uh, Sunderland played host to roughly two hundred and thirty guests for our International Night Celebration. Um, International Night helps to celebrate our wonderful diverse community with international foods and music from around the world. Uh, we were sponsored by a few local businesses, including Frontier Pizza, BJ Wholesale in Greenfield, and the new Bueno Isano Restaurant in South Deerfield. Um, additionally, our PTO, the Mass Cultural Council, the Frontier Regional CFCE grant, um, Frontier Girls Basketball Program, who act as, acted as the, um, the, the servers, um, for the, uh, food portion of the evening. Um, and SES staff helped to support the event. Our school psychologist and counselor, Vicky Palmer, um, is always the driving force, uh, behind making this event a huge, uh, success. And additionally, um, she, uh, worked collaboratively with Emily Datillo and Amy Batisti, who are, um, work with the CFCE. So thank you to them for putting it together. Uh, hero of the month. Our first grade students have been engaged in an ongoing civics project that ties into Massachusetts history and social science frameworks. The hero of the month unit helps to celebrate diversity both inside the walls of Sunderland and in general. Um, some of the heroes recognized up to this point include Martin Luther King Junior, Greta Thunberg, Susan B. Anthony and Muhammad Ali. Um, part of this, um, ongoing monthly project includes a writing component where students, um, uh, in their narrative writing pieces, talk about who the heroes are in their lives. And this is, um, the masterminds behind this incredible unit are Suzie Wells, or Suzanne Wells and Alicia Reed, our first grade teachers. And, uh, today, um, I was out of the, um, building at a meeting, but we hosted Tom Riccardi, um, for his Birds of Prey assembly for all students and it was a huge hit. Um, there was bald eagles, there was owls inside our gymnasium and it, um, something that the students really enjoyed. Um, that was sponsored by our PTO. And there's, uh, next, uh, week from tomorrow night is the FRSU Thirty-Eight, um, CPAC meeting, um, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um, next week we have a community appreciation luncheon. Um, you may have received an invite at this point. Um, and, um, so it's for, it's just recognizing all of those who, um, who serve in our, our community and they're invited for a delicious meal of spaghetti and meat sauce in the cafeteria to eat with the kids. Uh, we have some, um, a family science night coming up at the end of February, Read Across America Day. Um, where we, um, this year the focus is on diversity in literature. And we are going to be having some of our Frontier Regional Student Athletes come in and visit the classrooms. And then it, uh, just gets very busy from, from there on out, um, for the remainder of the year.
Is that community luncheon gonna be the same style as last year?
It is. And so you are allowed to get seconds like you did last year too.
No, but I, I have to tell you, my conversation with the, the first table I sat with was, I think, three first graders.
Yep.
And I, again, I'm not used to dealing with people of that age, but I figured, okay, we gotta start a conversation here. So my first question, each of them was in turn was, how old are you? I think the first graders, I can't remember, but they were like six and six and six. So then I said, well, how old do you think I am? Looked at me and the first one said, ninety-two.
And then you lost him with the budget discussion.
No. I would just somewhat take it back. Cause I know I'm on in yours, but ninety-two, I, that's still, you know, that's a big, that's a big number.
You age well.
So then the second one, so I turned to the next one, I said, how about you? Looked at me and said, eighty-nine. I'm thinking, well, we should go in the right direction. Looked at the third one, I said, but you know, there's still hope here, you know, whatever. Third one came in at ninety-nine. So I was like, you know, like, you have, you know, you learn to adjust and deal with.
The invitation stands.
I will say you were, you're far more popular if you come in in full equipment as the firefighters and police officers are. They were far more popular than us, us guys in suits.
What's the, what's the equipment for school?
Well, you can show up in your biking outfit.
All right. A great time. I mean, it was fine and it was, uh, you know, it was, it was cool.
Outstanding.
Yep. So what day is that? If I hadn't gotten that.
That is, um, an email just went out and I'll double check.
I put it on my calendar, so.
That's next Thursday. Um, it's from twelfth and one and the snow date being the fourteenth.
Okay.
All right, superintendent?
I have just the news you guys all have been waiting for. We received more money. It's gonna solve all our problems. Uh, we received nineteen hundred dollars more in rural school aid after they did the adjustment of the nineteen, the two thousand and seventeen census. So that additional payment will be added to the other money we receive. So brings us just about a hundred thousand dollars in the rural aid. Cause they doubled it from the year prior. So it's a little bit better. And that will come out in the second rural aid payment in April. So that is my big news. Other than that, it's budget, budget, budget and.
Does anyone want to move to executive session to, uh, that's all I can have to take? Okay. Watch your chair. All in favor?